No, I just don't know if it's supposed to be flashing. Okay, we're gonna call to order the July meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals. I'd like to welcome everybody. Can we please call the roll?
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Here.
Chairperson Frere?
Here. First, let's take a look at the minutes. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review them. From the June 15th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, on number 120, there's a typo there or something. I made a motion to approve it, but I'm not sure who seconded the motion. Do you know, Linda?
What was the motion for?
On line 120.
Yeah, because you made the motion, so that can't be right for second. We'll have to listen and figure that out.
I have the notes upstairs.
Okay. Just let the record reflect that this need to be changed.
Yeah, so maybe I think probably what we need to do is until we establish that, we can't approve these minutes.
Yeah, we'll bring them back.
We'll table these minutes and due to the correction that's required at line 120, we'll table the June minutes, bring them back in August, and then we can approve both or review both June and July. Okay, we're gonna call the first case, but before we do, just like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded, and there are people, at least we know one, who is watching online. So I'd ask you, when your case is called, if you could please come up to the mic and make sure that you speak loudly and clearly, give us your name and your address, and then we'll proceed in to discuss the issues surrounding your variance. Just so everybody understands, the board is required to apply a certain legal criteria to evaluate your variance. Some of the questions may sound a little strange or unusual, but I guarantee you the reason that we are asking those type of questions is so that we can get information that allows us to evaluate it in the framework of those legal requirements. So if you have questions, feel free to ask when you come up, but that's generally what we're doing. Okay? So let's call the first case, please.
Appeal of John Kokosha for a variance from section 220-18A3 and section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1220 Ferry Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District to construct a garage exceeding the accessory structure height limit and the quantity of accessory structures on a property. Section 220-18A3 states unless otherwise specified, accessory structure shall not exceed 15 feet in height. As proposed, the garage would have an average height of 19 feet 9 inches. Therefore, a 4 foot 9 inch building height variance is required. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall be not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. As proposed, one new accessory structure will be added on the property, a garage. The property already has more than three pre-existing accessory structures upon it, plus a variance for a pool. Therefore, a variance for one additional accessory structure is required. Seven notices were mailed out, zero responses.
Before we get started on this, welcome back to both of you. Before we get started on this, this presents a bit of an unusual issue because it deals with the floodplain and those issues. Our town planner, Laura Robertson, put together a memo on how this case came before us and some of the issues about it. So Laura, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask you to just give a brief overview to the... This is in your packet, by the way, and I assume your memo will be a part of the record. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, good. This is in your packet, but I'd like Laura, if she would, to provide us a bit of an explanation.
Yeah, because you guys saw this property in May, and you took action on the pool. But during that time, actually in preparation of the May meeting, the applicant attached a garage to his home, which is one way of mitigating the number of accessory structures on the property. Because this property came to you in May for an accessory structures variance. The town at that time had floodplain information, but hadn't fully reviewed it. So when you guys took action on that property, the town thought that everything was gonna... You know, everything else would be in compliance. But once the variance was granted, we did a full building review. And because the whole... The properties in the floodplain, we requested a floodplain delineation. Keith requested that you all have the floodplain delineation printed out in color in front of you. And so what that shows is if you attach the garage, the whole house gets placed in the special flood hazard area. And the special flood hazard area, like some people call it the 100-year floodplain. Trying not to call it that anymore because in the special flood hazard area, it's really a 1% chance of flooding. And honestly, like with, you know, increasing storms and stuff like that, it's probably a little higher. So they like to say 1% chance of flood per year in that. And that particular area is heavily regulated, both by New York State and by the federal government. And because the existing home had been outside the special flood hazard area, it wasn't constructed in conformance with anything that would be placed in the special flood hazard area. But if you attach the garage to it, it gets put in the special flood hazard area. And that piece of information, we did not have when they came to you guys in May. And so the planning department and the homeowner, we went through what, you know, what it means to be in the special flood hazard area, like what the options are. I mean, once the home gets placed in the flood hazard area, in order to bring it in compliance, they either would have to fill in the basement, the existing basement that has been part of the home, probably since it was built, would have to get filled in and abandoned, or they would have to carry extremely expensive flood insurance because the home would be out of compliance. And FEMA would regulate that home at the 196 feet, which is six feet below the base flood elevation. And that just becomes extremely problematic for mortgages and for things like that as you're moving through the property over the years. So because those were the options, the sort of final option was to detach the garage and then come back to you guys. And I just apologize that you didn't have that information in May. We didn't know it. But that is why they have returned and detached the garage. Because if they do attach it to the home, it triggers a lot more regulations than we realized it was going to.
So as I reviewed your memo, Laura, it appears that... Obviously, this information wasn't available. But at the time we reviewed this in May for the pool variance, no other variance was needed because at that time, the applicant felt that they were going to attach the garage to the house. No other variance was needed, and we proceeded.
Correct.
Can you speak just a little bit about this floodplain issue? Does it affect... Did it affect? Does it affect, or does it change at all the variance that we already granted for the pool?
It does not change that variance in ground pools as long as the fill that's placed around them is compacted in a certain, you know, to a certain specification or allowed in a special flood hazard area. So that permit is completely issueable for the pool, and that variance is unaffected by the change of the status of the garage.
So the pool's fine.
Pool is fine.
The pool variance is fine, and that's obviously not before us.
Correct.
It's my understanding from reading your memo that I think the corner of the garage was what caused a problem in the floodplain, and it affected the whole house.
Correct.
Because of that. If the garage is detached, is there any issue in terms of floodplain issues? Or are those going to be addressed in another manner?
So if the garage is detached, the garage is still required to do an elevation certificate, but it doesn't have to take in any of the data for the house because it's not attached. And the house is what's problematic because it was built outside the special flood hazard area. So if the garage is built detached, its lowest floor elevation is 202... Or 204, actually. I think it's above base flood elevation. So they would have to do an elevation certificate and prove that it's above the base flood elevation. But if they ever wanted to insure the garage, it would be completely compliant with all of FEMA's regulations, and it would be okay. It's essentially the garage would be built to code. It's because the house was built outside of the special flood hazard that when the house gets drawn in, it's not built to code.
So while this is all confusing, and thank you very much for clarification, all that's before us right now is actually pretty simple, is just another accessory structure on the property, very similar to what we did with the pool. But now we're looking at the garage, which wasn't in play when we decided the pool.
Correct. Because when you guys were looking at the pool application, the garage was actually shown as attached.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, no. I appreciate you putting the memo together. It was very helpful. So with that as a backdrop, we welcome you back, and you're becoming familiar faces.
I'm Andy Allison with AJ Architecture, representing the Kokoshas on the project.
Or could you talk into the mic?
Oh, sorry. I'm Andy Allison with AJ Architecture. We're representing the Kokoshas on the project.
And Mr. Kokosha is with you?
Yes, I'm John Kokosha, and the property address is 1220 Ferry Road.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to walk you through the design again, but it really hasn't changed since the last time, other than we've removed the flat roof that connected the main house to the garage. That's the only substantive change to the project.
Is the garage in the same spot that it would have been in had it been connected? It's just the connector is gone?
Right, right. There was a 12-foot, well, about 14-foot-long walkway that had a flat roof that connected the house to the garage. Yeah, so it was actually just, you know, it was just this space right in here. There we go. This space right in here. That had a flat roof over top that went from here to here, and we've removed that, so.
Now, just, and I know this is rehashing old information, but Mr. Kokosha, could you please explain to the board the property? I know there's a number of accessory structures that are on the property, kind of where they are in relation to where the house and garage are and what they're being used for.
Yeah, in addition to the main house, there's two other houses on the property, a larger house, we refer to as Cape House, and a smaller house we refer to as the cottage. There are two sheds and a four-bay garage are the other accessory structures on the property.
Anything else you think we should know or you'd like to add?
I'd say just the only other consideration is the property, you know, as we pointed out before, is quite sizable. None of this is visible from any neighbor. All of the property between the house and the proposed addition, and even the several outbuildings, you know, it has 300 to 500 feet of wooded area between it and the road, so.
And how many acres did you have, I'm sorry?
It's, I think it's just shy of 16 and 1/2.
Okay. And the distance, if you know, remember, the distance from the road to back to where the house is gonna be?
It's roughly 300 feet.
Okay. So if I'm standing at the end of your driveway where the road is, am I gonna see anything as I look back?
Just the woods.
Okay.
Laura, could you bring up sheet A 200? Because we do have the height variance as part of this, so I just wanted to point out to you the design. And yeah, this is the better one to talk about. So this is the main house, the existing house with small additions on it. And this is the garage. You know, we designed the roof to complement the roof of the main house. It's a typical nine-foot-tall garage, and by the time this hip roof gets up to that slope, that's what puts it up just above the 15 feet. So that's really the driver of the height variance.
So you're looking for about a 4 and 1/2-foot.
Right.
Variance for the height.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, as you look at it, that, you know, this is a flat drawing, so you probably won't even be able to stand there and see that roof peak from any point on the ground. You can't stand on the main house and even see the ridge of the roof, so.
Thank you. Any other information you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Nothing, like I said, nothing else has changed. It's, all the design's exactly the same except for that breezeway.
Okay. And I assume you would really rather prefer not fill your basement and not use it?
That's correct.
That's a given. Okay. Open this up to the board for any questions?
I got a question. This move here.
Can you, from the main road, see any of this?
No, no, you cannot.
Okay. That's all I got.
I have a quick question. What's the total acreage of the property?
It's just shy of 16 and 1/2 acres.
Okay. The reason I was asking is just thinking how many buildings are packed into how big a property, right? The other question is, being in a special flood hazard area, does this garage have any special environmental considerations as far as environmental impact? This, that's a question for Laura, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if it's in the special flood hazard area, when they're doing the building permit and the elevation certificate, they can't add enough fill to raise the floodplain by more than a foot. But this project is very miniscule when you're looking at that, like because you're talking about the Mohawk River floodplain.
There's no special environmental impact concerns because it's in a special flood hazard area?
No, I mean, the town keeps track of everything that's built inside the special flood hazard area. And it's, you know, you do have to make sure that you don't add too much development in the special flood hazard area because you will cause the floodwaters to rise. But this is so tiny compared to the floodplain. It's super tiny. But you also do have to do, like, because there's fill that's going underneath the garage, like, all of that has to be compacted to a specification because potentially the fill underneath the garage is subject to the flooding, so it has to have that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Board, Mr. Green?
Good evening. Good evening again.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I'm comfortable with the ridge of the roof of the garage that's now proposed to be unattached. Is there any persons off-site that would be able to see the height of the roof of the garage as you're proposing?
Laura, can you go back to the overall site map? That's probably easiest to look at it there. That's just fine. So this is the main house right here. The garage sits basically right where my light is right now. This is the main driveway in, and the woods really, they come in all... They fill this entire area right here, and then also on this side, too. So there really, you know, there's that probably 300 feet of wooded area where the trees are probably 60, 80 feet tall, shielding that from the road, you know, and then the river's down here, so there really is no... There's really nobody who can see really any of the buildings in any shape or form from the roadway, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
State land on the other sides?
Yeah, the one side's Ferry Road, and then everything else is surrounded by state land.
Mr. Antoni?
Yeah, I've just got just one question for Laura. Laura, so as it exists today, how many accessory structures?
So I think we did that count before.
There's five existing, right?
Counting the pool or not counting?
Not counting, not counting the pool.
Yeah. I'm just trying to clarify what.
Yeah.
Number accessories, because I've got an inventory on my own, but just want to make sure.
I mean, we would probably call it seven existing, plus the pool. But I don't know if you want to sort of break it apart, like this house, you know, in itself. Yeah, so the one, at least, you can clearly...
There's six accessory structures, not including the house, not including the pool variance.
Yeah.
Right, so, and they are this, you know, house, the little, which one do you call that?
The Cape.
The Cape, the associated shed with that, the cottage, its shed. There's a small kind of pole barn structure here, which is about a three-bay. And then there's a very tiny shed right there.
So the pool, then, would be number seven. We've already approved that, and then I'm looking for the eighth.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, I got a few questions, and I know we heard these things before back in May. And I applaud you doing a good job on that property, and you're looking for the correct results in here. On the garage, if you can explain to me, when you decided to have it attached to the house, did you have the same heights on the garage, or did it change?
Yeah, no, the garage is exactly the same as we presented before.
Okay. And what did you do to reduce? Because I know you're asking for 4.9 inches, and I know now you have another variance in front of us. So what can you do to reduce that garage, the heights at least? I know you need another structure on that property. You already have eight structure with the pool, and that will be probably another structure. What have you done since it's gonna be detached from the house to reduce, as we have to follow a certain criteria in here, and see what you have done to reduce this a little bit? Because you don't need it next to the house anymore. So, I mean, you don't need it attached to the house.
Right, right. So the one thing that we've done to try to keep the garage as shallow as possible is, you know, we have a nine-foot plate on that, and then we have a 212-pitched roof on it. So it's quite shallow, the pitch of the roof, which, you know, we're actually spending more money on that and making it all out of metal because we have that shallow pitch. So we really can't go lower than a 212-pitched roof and meet any of the warranties on the roofing. So we've kind of, the original design had this. We really haven't changed it to try to be more compliant because it's an accessory structure. The original design took into account trying to keep it as shallow as possible. We, you know, we really didn't want to have it be any, to really compete with the main house, so.
Okay, is because of the height, are you gonna have anything like second floor in the garage? Or it's gonna be just...
No, it's from this, from the plate height, the ceiling height in the garage, you know, it's only about five feet tall at the tallest part of the roof, so there's no...
So there's no second floor?
No, no, there's no stairs or anything.
And how about in the garage? Are you gonna have power in there, electric and so on?
Yeah.
For the garages and so on?
Yeah.
Okay. And I know I asked you this question about the pool back in May, and we talked about drainage and so on. And how far this house, and I know you said that probably, how far is the garage from the house now in the new design?
Yeah, it's about 14 feet away.
14 feet away.
Yeah, which is the same as it was before.
Okay. And the way it's tilted, it doesn't look like it's tilted toward the house, right?
No, no.
It's not?
No. This roof is what they call a hip roof, so it slopes from all four sides towards the center.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what are you gonna have? So when the water drain on one side, since it's got four sides, that doesn't affect the house?
Well, it's far enough away from the house, and everything has gutters around it, and then we catch...
We got gutters.
Yeah, we catch all the gutters and run them off to daylight, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Kokosha. Just to describe the existing house on the upper left-hand corner of the image that's being shared, the far-right edge of that seems to be a room with like four glass doors or something. And is that a flat roof on that part?
Yes, that is. That's an addition that's gonna be done to the house. It's like a three-season room, and then it has a flat roof with a porch on top of it.
Okay, so the upper part of that, the roof, would be occupied, correct? When it gets added?
I don't know.
It's like, it's a deck off the bedroom.
Yeah.
It's a deck. You know, you're gonna, someone's gonna go sit out there.
Yep, ideally.
And so forth. So I want to ask the question about that part of the design relative to the garage and ask, you know, did you consider doing a flat roof or low-slope roof on the garage, similar to that, so that it would be in character with the rest of the addition or the house?
Yeah, we looked at that originally. Because of the spans of the garage, it would have meant integrating, you know, some steel posts and steel beams. I particularly didn't like the design or look of that, and we actually looked at this, too. And this actually gets slightly higher than, with that railing around it, gets slightly higher than what's required by code, too. So, you know, we stayed with this to try to be more complimentary to the house, and the intent was that these little additions, which are all porches or three seasons, all had these flat roofs because we wanted the main house to have sort of its architectural integrity because it's such a strong aesthetic. And we just wanted this roof to sort of kind of mimic what was going on with the main house.
Thank you. So another few questions about vehicles on the property. You mentioned that with the other houses that are on the property, the outbuildings for them are also garages? Or could you describe, you know, vehicles on the property, please?
For the one Cape House, there's a detached two-car garage. Then for the cottage, there's no garage for that. There's one extra vehicle at the cottage and two vehicles at the Cape House.
And are you storing anything, any other equipment outside at the moment?
No, we do have equipment because it's a large property that we use to maintain the property, and we store either in one of those garages or in the four-bay garage that we talked about before.
Okay, and for the garage that's currently part of the house that's gonna be renovated into occupiable space, that's in the floodplain? I just want to make sure I understand.
No.
That is not in the floodplain. Okay. I know in reading the report, thank you Laura for putting that together, there were comments about having the flood vents in the walls and so forth. Is there anything that needs to be done? And this may be more a question for Laura. At the garage, because of its level, is there, you know, is there anything that needs to be done special for that?
So the final elevation of the floor of the garage is above the floodplain? So there, and there is no basement below it, so there would be nothing to...
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. The existing house is out of the special flood hazard area now, but it would be in if they attached the garage.
Laura, just an education, it's 202. The elevation is usually is not required for flood zone?
So it depends.
I'm not sure the difference between the 204 and 202, just a learning.
Yeah, it depends on where you are on the Mohawk River. The Mohawk River's floodplain doesn't drop very quickly. But if you're mapping the floodplain, like the FEMA maps are floodplain, you can see these black line contours. And this is actually a truly legal digital regulatory flood map from FEMA. And the little black squiggles are a base flood elevation at that point in the river. And you can actually see between those, like 200 doesn't even change. So this entire property, the base flood elevation is at 200 because the Mohawk is a massive river and the floodplain is, you know... But if you go, if you go up maybe another contour or two, then the base flood elevation becomes 201. And if you go down a contour or two, the base flood elevation will be like 199. Like, you know, maybe when you get down to Albany, the base flood elevation will be like, you know, 150, right? So it just depends on where you are on that river.
Just to get this, so when you're saying 150, you're saying 200, what is the footage of the water? Do you know? Like...
So, I mean, if you pulled out the flood study, because when FEMA makes the regulatory maps, the things that we are required to regulate to, they do a flood study with them, and you'd be able to tell the exact elevation. Well, the elevation of the Mohawk changes quite significantly when they put the locks in, right? Because they make it navigable. But they probably do some kind of average, so you would be able to know what the elevation of the water was at that point. But, you know, base flood, so they'll know that, and then they calculate like 100-year storm or 1% storm. or 1% storm, add all of that elevation in, and they come up with the base flood elevation, and Zone X is not as regulated, but doesn't mean it won't flood, that's the 0.02% chance of flood every year, but, all the base flood elevation is basically doing is modeling, you know, a hundred-year storm, it's modeling that storm and saying where the floodwaters will be, and then New York State requires you to build two feet above that.
I see.
Yeah, two feet, so, the base flood elevation on this property is 200 across the entire property, because the Mohawk has such a big floodplain, the regulatory standard for anything on that property that is in the floodplain would be 202, but the, like he's saying, the garage is at 204, but unfortunately, the home is at 196.
I see, because you mentioned the, the Mohawk River, and, and I know in the stockade, everybody's required to have, you know, flood insurance.
Right, correct, because, I mean, there's very few communities in New York State that aren't part of the National Flood Insurance Program, so, yeah, if you don't carry a mortgage, you're not normally, like, you don't have to have flood insurance, but there aren't that many people that can't carry a mortgage.
Laura, in this case, if he was to have the, the garage attached to the house, then he would have been required because of that, right?
Um, be, if he was to get insurance, his insurance would know that his home was at 196, and it would be non-compliant insurance. Whether or not the town under the building permit would be, would require for him to fill the basement, it's, the town doesn't necessarily consider structures to be attached by a breezeway, per code, but the NFIP does, so, I don't know that the town would require the basement to be filled in, but anybody who was carrying any kind of insurance or mortgage on that property would end up having to fill the basement in.
Interesting stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions by the board? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on the issue? Okay, anyone online? I think we just have Elena there, so, before we ask for a motion, remember that we're dealing with two variances, the garage height, and we're also dealing with the additional accessory structure, when you make a motion, please indicate whether you're dealing with one, the other, or both together, if you would, please, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to grant the application of, for both variances as submitted by the applicant. I find that the benefit cannot be achieved by other means, he's done everything he can to mitigate, considering the particular circumstances and federal regulations, does not cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood or the character, especially since nobody can see it, and he's by and large rehabbing the property, this absolutely, both of these are absolutely substantial, there is no adverse environmental impact, and this is self-created, however, that's not determinative, and on the whole, I would move to grant the application as written.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I'm gonna explain a little bit about this property, because this is a unique property, and the only reason I'm voting yes, to allow more than eight variances, and allow this, again, because of uniqueness of that property, and the acreage that has on that property.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Ferrery, Chairperson Ferrery.
I'm gonna vote yes, I think it's important to note that when we usually deal with accessory structures, we're talking about a lot of things on a small property, here we're talking about a lot of things, but on a very, very large property spread out, which really is not visible or impactful on neighbors, or people driving by, or that type of thing. So, for the same reasons that, that made sense with the pool, it makes sense to allow this, we appreciate you coming back once again, not that you're not always welcome, but spend some time enjoying your property, your, your, both your variances have passed seven zeros, so, good luck.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we call the next case?
The appeal of Denise Cashmere for a variance from Section 220-18B3C and Section 220-4 of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 949 Pierce Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, to maintain an eight-by-eight-foot shed partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-13B3C states that minor accessory structures are not permitted closer than five feet to the side or rear property lines. Section 220-4 defines a minor accessory structure as detached accessory buildings or other structures, 120 square feet or less in area, the shed at 674 square feet is a minor accessory structure, as constructed, the shed is located two feet six inches from the side property line, therefore, a two-foot-six-inch side yard setback variance is required, nine notices were mailed, two responses.
Hi, could you please state your name and your address?
First, I wanted to apologize for the cough drop in my mouth, the cold air in here makes, I'm not complaining about the cold air, but it makes me cough.
Wait, Denise, can I interrupt you for a second? Sorry, can, is it okay if I read the letters, though?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, sorry, Ms. Michael and Nadia Rockwell, 2488 Brookshire Drive. Dear Laura Baberton and the Zoning Board of Appeals, we are a neighbor of Denise Cashmere, 949 Pierce Road, Niskuna, New York, 12309, we would like to express our support of Ms. Cashmere keeping the shed where it currently is adjacent to our property line, at 2488 Brookshire Drive, Niskuna, New York, 12309. The shed was present and visible at the time that we took ownership of our property, and having the shed where it currently is has not caused any problems or issues, we hope the board will consider allowing Ms. Cashmere to keep the shed at its current location. Sincerely, Michael Rockwell and Nadia Rockwell. Second letter is from Danielle Hiller, to whom it may concern, we received a notification for a zoning board of appeals meeting in regard to 949 Pierce Road on 7/20/22, which we cannot attend, we feel the variance should be denied, the owner has ample room on their property to place the structure without any variances, the survey the owner is referring to in their application was not completed on the property line requiring the variance, and should not be taken into consideration when determining the setbacks. Thank you, Danielle and Joseph Greiner.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Denise Cashmere, 949 Pierce Road, obviously in Niskuna, I do think my application is pretty detailed, but I'll go over it with you, the original shed was on the property for the last 55 years, and it was put there in the 60s, I purchased the property in 89, there was a shed there, much to my surprise, it lasted 47 years, the floor was rotted out, I'll admit that, and that it was starting to deteriorate, so in 2014, I requested, I was going to replace it in kind, exact same location, I do wanna comment that, in this, I, I was a planner for Schenectady County for 30 years, I really am aware of processes, ordinances, and guidelines, so what I did is called the town and said, I am replacing something in kind, same size, same location, is it grandfathered in, is there anything I need to do, I was told, no, you're okay, go ahead, okay, unfortunately, I don't know who I spoke to, I called the planning department, but that was eight years ago, so I'm not really sure who I spoke to, but that was why I thought it would be grandfathered in, since it was there, and I was just replacing something that had deteriorated. Basically, it was replaced, as I said, in the exact same location, right now, it would be a hardship to try to pick it up and move it, and I'm gonna also go back to one of my other comments, is there was an, another survey done to the Rockwell's property behind me, which actually changed my back borderline, so I actually gained, I gained 11 inches in the back, about sixes in, in the front, so we're talking, probably, I'm asking for a variance of at the most, two feet right now, the shed is located right next to the garage, with just enough space to literally get through the garage, so that I can maintain the shed and the garage as far as painting it, it's up against a tree, so there's no hardship with the neighbors next door, as far as what they would have to maintain, because part of the tree is mine, and getting in there, there's no reason for anybody to ever get in there but me, I can walk around the building, so, that was, you know, one issue. As far as adverse effects on the neighborhood, to be honest, the shed was there before there was a neighborhood, no one ever had been on that property next door, and that, I think, is probably the issue, is, quite honestly, and this is my mistake, I never considered the sideline boundary, because I was replacing an existing shed, the lot next to me was always, always owned by the other property owners, another lot up, and they're the ones that originally put the shed in, to begin with, so when I replaced it, I just replaced it exactly what it was, because I really couldn't put it any closer to my garage, I'm trying to think if there's, I, I have verified that the, the original shed was there in 67, again, I, it's a very tiny shed tucked in next to the garage, up against part of a tree, and I, interesting enough, I talked to my neighbor across the street today, who said, oh, I got one of those letters, she said, what's it all about? I said my shed, and she said, what shed? And I said, that one over there, and I pointed it from her house, she said, I can't see a shed, and I said, exactly, so that's where I'm at, it's a very tiny shed, and I think you all have the photos and the survey and everything that goes with it, and I just don't know why it suddenly drew this amount of attention that it did.
Ms. Cashmere, so, the shed was originally built between 65 and 68?
Correct.
Laura predates our zoning court, so it's grandfathered, okay. The, the shed was replaced in 2014?
Correct.
Sat on the same footprint?
Yes, exactly.
Didn't move it?
Nope.
And, and, is that the shed we're talking about?
Yeah, the 2014 shed.
So, the surveys that we could find, and all the information from the assessors about the previous shed, was an eight-by-six, and her building permit is for an eight-by-eight, so it's not the exact same footprint, and I know that it's.
Eight-by-two, six-by-two.
It's a technicality, but it isn't truly on the same footprint. It's very close, I'm not even sure you could buy an eight-by-six.
You can't, you can't, it's, the, the survey that I attached, that, that I had when I purchased the property in the 80s, says it's an eight-by-two, eight-two-by-six-two shed, no, you cannot purchase those sheds anymore, so yes, I went up to an eight-by-eight.
The, the shed has been in place for eight years?
Correct.
How did this come before?
Oh, thank you for asking that, I'd like to know that.
It was a complaint from a neighbor.
Was the complaint from a neighbor? Because when I asked, I was, you didn't have that answer.
It was, that was the answer, yeah, it was a complaint from a neighbor and we investigated.
And the shed, I assume, is used with lawn equipment?
Just, yeah, lawn equipment, yeah, my riding lawnmower doesn't even fit in it, it's not that big.
And the garage still exists in the same?
Correct.
Size, form, next?
It's a 1904 property, not a whole heck of a lot has changed, except the new neighbor.
Okay, thank you, so any question, other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple questions.
Sure.
I'm looking at your pictures, and it looks like to me, you have a sidewalk right to the shed, has that been there with the old?
That, that was the, well, because the floor was rotting out, on the old shed, I put a concrete pad under it.
So that concrete is, is there now, right?
Yes, yes, all of that's right there.
And that's, it goes directly to the door of the shed?
Correct.
So, so if you were moved, to move the shed?
Two feet, it won't.
Two feet, then you got major problem with?
A sidewalk to nowhere.
And when did you put that sidewalk in?
The exact same time the shed was put in, it had to be put in before, obviously.
Right, so, I know that you wrote a lot of good stuff here, just to put it on the record, so, this shed, it's eight-by-eight now, and it used to be eight-by-six.
Eight, eight-two-by-six-two.
Right, so, we understand that, so tell me a little bit about the shed, what's behind the shed, what, what's going on behind the shed?
I have photos, if you'd like to see.
Ah, just tell me, you can tell.
Oh, it's better if you see the photos, it, it's basically a wooded area.
Wooded area.
It's just wood, it's, it's, it's large vegetation, and the, the neighbors that complained.
Okay, okay, so while those pictures are passing, do you, there's a fence in there, or anything going on in the back?
No, no, I have a, a split rail fence on my back property line, which is another 33 feet behind the shed.
Okay.
Maybe, can we keep these?
Oh, you can have.
And Laura will make them a part of the record, please.
All right, so what am I looking at?
You're looking at, if you look from the back of my shed, straight back, the, the little landscape tie is the property boundary, the junk is not mine.
Okay.
Okay, mine's just the built-up area, and the other one is looking forward from the back of the shed up to it, so it kinda shows you it's all vegetated in.
Okay, and, that shed, where does the water go? I mean, I can't tell if it's, does it go to the front, to the back, and I know?
The only reason I'm, I'm sighing is, there's tremendous drainage issues since this house got built next door, Laura's well aware, aware of those, there's many violations against this house next door, because of the drainage and the, the water and the sediment that's running onto my property, and onto the Rockwell's property, I'm not creating anything, I'm the, I'm the recipient of it all, so, all drainage is, that's why I did the concrete pad, because that's probably the driest area that there is on that section of the property, and then the property does slightly go downhill towards Brookshire Drive.
Okay, so, one more question, and I'm gonna pass it to probably other people on the, the board here, looking at your garage, looking at your shed, your shed is, how far is it from the garage, the side?
Oh, boy.
Because I'm looking at it, it looks like about three feet, but I.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, it's enough that you can get a little, you can get a wheelbarrow through, so I can walk with my arms next to me and get a wheelbarrow, it's pretty close.
So, your garage, the way it's pointing down, is it affecting the?
No, there's, there's, there's a, there's a.
There's enough room for the snow and all that stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not affecting that, okay, that's it for now.
Okay.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, just flush off the record and help me out a little bit, Richard Green, is you standing on Pierce Road and looking at the front of your house, looking past the front of your house, toward your garage, and looking toward the shed, which is the subject of, of your application, can you approximate the distance from Pierce Road to the shed?
To the shed?
Yeah.
If my property's 195 deep, and my back of my shed is 33 feet from the back property, so it's over 150 feet.
Very good, you know, thanks, that's really the piece of information I was seeking, thank you.
Thanks.
I also have a question?
Sure.
Knowing that the size of the shed changed a little bit from what it was before to what it is now, from the eight-two. eight, two by six, two to the eight by eight. Uh, when it was placed there in 2014, did the side that's facing the neighbor closest on that side, did it get any closer to that property line?
The width used to be eight, two. The depth was six, two. And now it's eight, eight. So no, the side property, it's actually, uh, less.
Okay. So it got a little bit farther away from the neighboring property.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Antonucci?
Yeah, uh, just one question regarding the second letter, uh, that you read. Where, where was that received from? What neighbor?
Um, that is from.
She's using her other, her maiden name. Sorry, it's the same, it's-
I mean, it's the one that's to the left of it. Yeah, she doesn't actually have her address on here.
Thank you. All right. That's all I wanted to say.
So facing the house, it would be to the left?
Correct.
And in that picture?
And I have to state that there's many violations against them, which I instigated. So I'm guessing.
And I appreciate that.
I know. I know that's not your issue. I understand that.
So just to, just to confirm, it's that blue house that was in the picture that we saw? Is that correct?
Yeah, which picture?
The grayish house, the, the ones you handed to us.
Oh, that one. Yes, 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 yes. The one on top of the hill.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to, uh, speak to the issue? Is there anyone online? Besides Elena? Excuse me. All right. Hearing none, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take care of this myself. I, I'm, uh, gonna move that we grant the variance. Um, I do not think that this is a substantial, uh, variance. Um, the fact that we're dealing with a shed that's in the same place as it has been for how many years?
55.
55 years, uh, give or take six inches maybe. Um, the fact that there has been a shed there for 55 years, I don't think that, uh, it's going to change the, uh, effect on the neighborhood. I don't think there's any environmental issues. Uh, in fact, the fact that the owner has chosen to replace a shed that was, uh, decaying and, and falling apart and put in a, a new shed. And the fact that that shed's been, that new shed has been in place for eight years. To me, this is a no brainer. So I'm, I'm gonna move that we, uh, grant the variance.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman, for all the reasons stated.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we call the roll, please.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes and I applaud the applicant for the explanation why, what happened and how this came about. And also, uh, just want to add that, uh, moving that shed would have caused a major problem for the applicant to try to do a sidewalk in there and, uh, and so on. And also, it's been there since 1967 or, or 68. Uh, I applaud the applicant for, uh, replacing it after 47 years and, uh, I say yes to the motion.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm gonna vote yes, uh, with the one, uh, thing I'd like to add here being that typically we would hold uh, this sort of, uh, two foot, nine inch variance to be substantial in this case. Or the historical placement of the structure in question, I believe, does mitigate that. That being said, I, I vote yes for the reasons, other reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Ferrari?
Yes, for all the reasons that have been stated. Your variance, uh, is granted, seven, zero. I'd say good luck with the project, but it's already there.
It's already there.
Enjoy it.
I appreciate it. Now, thank you very much.
Enjoy your shed. Call the next case, please.
The appeal of Joseph and Lori DiCaprio for a variance from section 220 dash 25B1A and zoning ord- of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 1278 Ardmore Court, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low density residential zoning district to construct a six foot fence exceeding the height limit in the side yard. Fence section 220 dash 25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six foot high fence will be located in the side yard. Therefore, a two foot fence height variance is required. 11 notices were mailed, one response.
This is from Tracy and Bill Gurney, 1277 Ardmore Court. Um, to whom it may concern, as the neighbors directly across the street from an indirect line of sight to the proposed fence, we wholeheartedly approve the variance in this matter. Tracy and I are sure that this particular zoning ordinance is necessary to maintain the aesthetics of the neighborhood in many instances. However, in this particular instance, it is not necessary. A six foot fence in this location will not detract in any way as we live on a cul-de-sac. The proposed fence will actually provide a barrier from the backyard of another housing unit on Linwood Drive. Ironically, if that unit wanted to put up a six foot fence in their backyard, they would have no issue in accordance with the same ordinance and without needing any variance. Respectfully request the board give favorable consideration to the DiCaprio's proposed variance. Um, very respectfully, Tracy and Bill Gurney, 1277 Ardmore Court.
Welcome. Please tell us your names and where you live.
Sure. Uh, my name is Joe DiCaprio.
I'm Lori DiCaprio.
We're married. Uh, we're at 1278 Ardmore Court, Niskuna, New York.
Tell us a little bit about your variance request.
Certainly. Uh, thank you, uh, respected board members for the opportunity to plead our, our case and hear our appeal. We do appreciate it. Uh, so the intention is simply to add privacy to, uh, the side in, in rear portions of our, our home. And the six foot fence, for the reasons, uh, referenced from the gurneys, it backs up to where, where the, the, the side yard falls in that four foot variance. It, it runs where our neighbors to our right, where their backyard is. Uh, we prefer a fence and we, we'd like it to be six foot from the side to the rear for privacy purposes. And we feel it aligns with the backyard portion of, of our neighbors. Uh, so it just seems to make sense for us to, to, to have it be consistent. And it really is just about privacy. And we wanted to respect process and make sure, uh, we, we appealed it the, the right way per the town regulations.
Okay. Anything else you'd, you'd like to add? Let me, you, you made a, a notation in, in your application that I wanted to ask you about. It indicates that, uh, it was suggested to you, I believe, not quite sure by whom, about some, uh, natural vegetation, maybe arborvitae's or something to create the, the, the privacy.
Yeah, it was the, the, when we spoke to the, the town office to learn about the appeal process, that was, it was given as a suggestion.
And
I can't remember who.
That's, it, it, it indicates in here, you do not wish to explore that as an option. How come?
Oh, we just prefer fencing. Uh, we, we have vegetation in our rear, uh, of the house. It's pretty, pretty deep. And we're good with that. Uh, the side, we just prefer fencing.
Now, I'm looking at, at the, the diagram or the photo, I guess, the aerial that you provided. And your house, 1278, uh, obviously there's a cul-de-sac, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And it appears that, are, are the neighbors you're talking about wanting to have the six foot fence, the neighbors behind, it looks like they have a, I don't know if that's a pool or a?
No, it's right next to 2197.
2197, yeah.
Okay.
Their backyard.
All right. So their backyard, uh, and it appears at least from this photo, I don't know if it's act, still accurate, but it appears it's a fairly open area into your yard.
That's correct.
Um, because it looks like you have some vegetation immediately behind your house.
Correct.
But on that side, you do not. The diagram you gave us indicates that you're going to put a four foot fence, it looks like from your driveway over to near the lot line.
We're allowed to do that, right?
Yeah, four, four foot.
Right. No, I'm, I, my, my question really is, is if four feet is okay there, why do you need six feet in the back?
Because we have two teenage boys who play a lot of football and baseball and they throw the balls and with, uh, Linwood right there to have that privacy of two more feet and keeping the balls in our yard would be nice.
Okay. Are there, to, to your knowledge, uh, as you drive around, other fences in the, uh, neighborhood?
Other, there's other fences, yes.
Six foot fences?
In backyards and by the garage. I don't know. I can look.
Probably, I mean, we don't, we haven't really examined it close enough to say where the six foot fence falls.
That's fine.
Rear and side. But yeah, I would, I would say there's ample fencing, yeah.
Okay. Any other board members have questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Laura, I, uh, I'm looking at 1278. Can you point with, uh, with the mouse in there where that fence on the side's gonna go? Because it looks like an angle to me.
Yeah, it's like, it's from the intersection of 2197 and 220, 2201, like that little corner there.
So this corner?
It starts there and then it basically goes, you know, along the lot line to the front of the house. So it's right in here. Yeah.
So basically that's what's gonna block the, the neighbors from be able to see the backyard of Mr. DiCaprio.
Well, it would be our side yard.
Sorry.
Some of our backyard.
If you block the side, you'll be able to block the back too. So, Mr. DiCaprio, usually on this board, we don't allow fences of six feet to the front of the house.
Right.
Uh, do you need it all the way to the front or can you go halfway from the house to the back? Because we, we're gonna try to see if there's a way we could reduce it. So do you really need, it looks like to me you might be able to get by if you have it to the middle of the, the, the side of the house instead of to the front.
The middle of the-
Yeah. See the side of the house there? If you go, do you have a door on the side by, by any chance?
No.
No.
You don't have a door.
No.
So what I'm trying to say, uh, to reduce it, because usually we don't allow six feet. We're, you're supposed to put four feet. But there's any way you can reduce, how, how, how wide is your side of the house?
About thirty five.
Thirty, thirty, thirty five feet.
So thirty, thirty, is it possible to put it into 15 feet from, from the house?
Can I walk up there?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Keep bringing the microphone though.
Bring the microphone.
Or take this one.
Careful, careful. I don't think it, it's not, yeah, it's not gonna go anywhere.
So you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, she's gonna bring you.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
It used to be.
We're gonna help you out.
Thanks.
All right.
So you're saying right here?
That would be, where's your side of the house? That's, right, that's the front. So now go to the middle of the side of your house.
This is the side of our house.
So go to the middle of that. That's about 15 feet, right? So would that be able to help you to have a six feet fence from there? To get your, uh, fence reduced?
And then do like four feet here and go into a six foot?
You could do four feet. That's not a problem, right?
Could we do it at the, where the side yard starts, a six feet?
That's what you're seeking to do, according to your-
You're seeking six feet.
On our side yard.
Right. And because you're doing it to the front of the house, then six feet is not allowed. So usually, on the side, but you could do four feet on the side. And then when you get to the back of the house, you can go back to six feet.
Which is back here.
Right. But because of the angle of your house, you could take that line and go down, uh, probably, uh, what's that? I, I would assume about four, five feet from looking at the angle. So that line could go down straight.
If you draw a line straight across from the rear corner of your house?
No, it's parallel to the road, not parallel to the house.
Oh, parallel to the road.
Yeah, it's parallel to the road.
Oh, okay. That's better. Thank you, Laura.
Sorry.
Oh, thanks, because I was, thank you.
I'm like, okay, it's parallel to the road. Okay. All right. So that's where, uh, okay. So, so, okay, we understand it's parallel to the road. So if you go 15 feet down, would you be able to, to put a fence there, six feet fence? Yeah.
You're saying here?
Yeah. And up instead of the front. It's not-
Well, we were hoping for the, we were gonna, we're hoping for this four feet, but then you're saying go four feet to here. And then start six feet there. I just don't know how it would look because our neighbor's backyard. Can we look at that other picture? Where you say our neighbor's backyard?
See, once this board allows a, uh, six feet to the front of the house, everybody's gonna want it. So that sets up a fence in, in your, in your neighborhood. So I'm trying to see if you'd be willing to reduce it. It's up to you guys.
Sure, sure. So a six feet in the side of the yard, not the front of the yard. Right? Because this is our side yard.
That's your side. And from your side, you'd have to go to the back of the house to start six feet.
Right. Like the, so we're asking for the variance here. You're saying ask for it here.
I'm saying, would you like to reduce it for us? Would you like to reduce it down to half of the house? That's up to you guys. I'm not trying to tell you what to do. It's just-
An option.
Okay. So you, you guys need to decide. Mr. Chairman, that's, if they wanna amend it, they can, right?
They can. What it would require is, is that a portion of that, you have four feet in, running across the front of that side yard. And then you have a section running where you're wanting six feet. A section of that would have to be four feet.
Right.
And then switch to six feet.
And then it would run to six feet at the midway point that you-
Right. That would be an accommodation to try and reduce the, the variances, I believe, what Mr. Latif is, is seeking. You, and again, it's, it's just an attempt to, to try and find a cut, kind of a common ground.
Respect to the president's sitting, I mean, we, we-
And, uh, you, you don't have to. It's up to you. You can, you can just go with what you've got down here and look for that. It's really up to you.
I don't know.
While you're thinking about that, anyone else on the board have any questions?
I do. How are you this evening?
We're good.
I'm Richard Green.
Hi, Richard.
And, uh, you know, neither here nor there, but, uh, you know, I didn't do a site visit. You know, I took a look. And I, I, uh, just wanted to see if, uh, what I thought was the case is your understanding of what the case is. We keep talking about this neighbor at 2197 Linwood. And correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't there a for sale sign?
Yeah, we actually, I, I do want to add, I think, for an honor, Richard, we do have a letter of support from the people that bought the house at 2197.
Got it.
And we, we just, we just got it. So I, I probably should submit that. Um, sorry. But they were okay with it as well, with the six foot. But I do understand, Mr. Latif, the, the precedent piece, so I don't want to- Thank you, Richard, for putting that-
Yeah, no problem. We want to have you, we want to have you tell us this. So, ready? So the record's clear. Your understanding is the house has been sold. The people, the house has been sold to have submitted a letter not objecting to your request.
Right.
All right. Is, would it be appropriate for to, uh, for us to hear that, uh, that letter and read it into the record?
Yep. This letter is from Chris and Sheila Green, 2197 Linwood Drive. Dear Town of Niskuna, we are writing this to inform you that we are in support of the installation of a six foot fence at- at the home of Joe and Lori DiCaprio at 1278 Ardmore Court, Niskuna. If you have any further questions or concerns, we can be reached at a phone number that I'm not gonna read. Sincerely, Chris and Sheila Green.
Thank you for submitting that additional piece that we may consider.
Thank you for.
For what it's worth to each one of us.
We're learning.
Ready, uh, ask anybody, I'm a straight shooter. Look, I, I looked around Ardmore Court and I, I didn't see any other six-foot fences in front or side yards like you're asking.
There's not.
There's not.
All right, and I kind of expanded my tour. And crossed Linwood and it's magically not Ardmore Court, it's.
It's a, uh, what's it called, Windmere, uh, Shelburne?
It's got another name, but it's right across. And I looked and, and, you know, it's not identical, but it's a similar type of cul-de-sac with houses. And, you know, I, I looked, I, I was looking to see what I could see and I didn't see any six-foot fences in the, uh, front or side yards that you were asking, except for one, there was one that I believe was the subject of a previous application, but you can't see it. It's like right up against the pool. So, I just, you know, in fairness, I need to.
Absolutely.
Share that with you, and, and I'm not suggesting you suggested anything different, but it, it would, it, as you made the application, truly would be a first of a kind. And I just, so.
Neither of our parents would be surprised, probably.
So I'm just, I'm just sharing that with you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions by the board?
Uh, I have a quick question, uh, Mr. Chairman. Can this proposed fence be seen from Linwood Drive?
Yes, yes. So if 2197 put a six-foot in their backyard, it would be in the same location, just like one step over on their property.
Would it be fair to say, or, let me rephrase this?
Sure.
If I'm driving on or walking on Linwood Drive, can I see into your backyard?
Sure can.
So kinda in between, uh, what's that, 2197 and 2201?
Yes, yes.
Wide open.
And we don't wanna take the vegetation down in the back of the house. That would be, cause we don't have a lot of flat land, like our backyard, and our other side yard is not flat, but we didn't, we don't wanna touch the vegetation. We, we are rule followers, we are not looking to cause any trouble or break any rules. The only reason we even came up with it and thought of it is because if 2197 decided to put a fence in their whole backyard.
Just, just so you understand, 2197 is in a unique situation because they have two front yards.
Sure.
Both of the yards that face a road are front yards where you can't, the, the, the height restriction is four feet. So that's, just so you're aware.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They couldn't put a six-foot fence across their entire, what looks like.
They could put it in their backyard, right? Which is our side yard, right, or no?
No.
Do I have that wrong?
No, that's a front yard, uh, because it faces, it faces Ardmore Court. I know it sounds strange, I lived this, I have, side of my house faces.
So that whole thing is their front yard? Would be considered their front, wow.
The entire, I'm using the word yard loosely, the entire yard that faces Ardmore from that side of the house, if you draw a line over to, towards your house, is a front yard. As Laura's got, thank you, Laura. So as you see that yellow line on the left side of facing Ardmore?
Yeah.
That is a front yard.
What's on the right side of that yellow line?
The right side is the, is, that's the only piece of their backyard.
So they could put the fence there?
They could put a six-foot fence in that.
Yeah, so that's, and that's where we're asking, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I, would it be okay with you if I approach, uh, the screen there just cause I have a, a clarification real quick?
Can you verbally request your clarification?
I, I, I guess, um, so, the applicant's proposed fence, if 2197 proposed, wanted to build a six-foot fence on their side of the property line in the same location, would 2197 be permitted to build that fence? Because I'm in a corner a lot, I know how weird these things can be as well.
Within their backyard?
And so, but in, in this location, right there, right?
That's their backyard.
So 2197 would be able to build that six-foot fence? Because that's their backyard in the same place.
Right.
Right, in that place that Laura just highlighted, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? And again, I don't want to leave Mr. Latif's.
No, no, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but the, just going back, Laura, if you can just, uh, show the applicant my recommendation or if they would like to see that, uh, if you could wipe everything out and show them from the side in the middle of the house to the backyard, where it would be.
Okay, just to clarify, where I drew these lines, the side yard of the home is, is parallel to the road. So like, starting on this corner, parallel to the road goes this way, and starting on the back corner, parallel to the road is, so in between these little guys is their side yard. I think the home is only twenty-three feet, so figure like ten, twelve to go halfway back. Yeah, um, but if you were to do that, oops, I'll show you, hold on.
If you can wipe the other two lines out.
Yeah, I will, potentially. This is, this is a new thing, I was just trying it.
You're doing it very well.
Normally I mess it up at the planning board, but this, well, you know.
Right.
But then you would still need a variance for like, you know, that part right there.
So, so that's, uh, working with the board here, trying to eliminate the big variance that you're asking for. If you want it straight like that, if you don't want it straight and you're gonna count on your neighbor, maybe someday put in a fence up there, then you don't have to, you can even angle it and then, uh, it will be on their fence.
So it would be.
Right, Laura, if it's angled.
Yeah, I mean, if they're not gonna.
Uh, from the middle. Instead of parallel to the road.
Y- yes, and maybe Elena can jump in here though, but I think that, um, we can ask them why they don't wanna reduce the variance like that.
Right.
Yeah, but we don't necessarily wanna be like, yeah.
I agree, so.
I just, i- it's gonna be difficult unless we have some exact measurements that you can.
Well, it's twenty-three, so that gives us what, uh, half of the house is about, um, eleven and a half or. Instead of thirty and fifteen, so now we know the measurement of your house.
My worry is from Linwood that that would look weird to have a four-foot fence going up to a six-foot fence, but maybe not, I think I just have to see a picture. You know, I can research that on my own to see that.
I was putting in some, uh, some ideas, it's up to you guys which way you wanna go, so you need to tell the board and, and decide which way you wanna go.
Are we allowed to, like, if it doesn't get passed, do we bring it back with a new idea like that? Is that how it works? I, and we don't, we're sorry, we're new to all this.
So, the board has to take application, an action on the application in front of them unless it's amended. If the answer is no, you could bring a modified application back at your own cost, but it, you wouldn't be able to get a no tonight and then be like, okay, just kidding, can we try it a different way? You would have to redo your application.
So they would have to, uh, submit another application fee when, when you say at their own.
Um, typically if they're modifying, it's a half application fee, um, because, but it, um, they can verbally amend it all the way up to the vote, but once you guys take a vote, that's what you're taking a vote on tha- that night, and so you wouldn't be able to bring another application.
Could it be tabled, uh, and they could bring more information to a subsequent meeting?
Oh, Elena, maybe we can, Elena, are you having, hold on, I'll read her comment. The applicants do not have to amend their application, that is their choice if they decide to, but they can proceed with their application except for tonight. Yeah, um, and we can table it too, if we would like to see more information, you always have that, right?
If the applicant would like to provide us with more information or, or then.
If you would like the opportunity to, we're putting you on the spot. If you would like the opportunity to discuss it, maybe, you know.
Add some drawings perhaps that would give more dimension to it.
Or even without incurring a ton of expense, just look, you might be able to even do it virtually online, have, this is a six-foot fence transitioning into a four-foot fence to give you an idea aesthetically, if you like that, what the situation is, then we can table your motion or your, your application for a variance and bring it up in the August meeting. And by that time, you may say, yeah, that sounds good, we'd like to amend our application, or no, or something else. But it gives you the opportunity to maybe do a little investigation, maybe talk to your new neighbor and say.
Fair enough.
Or you could go with whatever you.
Or, or you can go with what you have planned for tonight. That, we're just trying to give you a couple of options of what you'd like to do. Unless you're, unless you're planning on, you know, you've got the hammer and nails out and you're ready to, to jump on the project, it may be.
Yeah, we're kinda there.
We're hoping in the summer, but, um, I mean, we don't have the stuff yet, but.
Yeah, um, w- we wanna work with the town, we, we're respectful of the precedent setting that this causes. I am mindful that our neighbors or whoever buys that house could put a six-foot fence up in their backyard and suddenly there's a six-foot fence backed up to our six-foot, to a four-foot fence, which we're, we're trying to meet halfway, um, who knows if that would ever happen? I, 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 you know, I work in kind of absolutes, so, where we work, I should say, in absolutes. Maybe I do more than you, uh, but, uh, yeah, I, we, we will verbally amend the request to, she says a sign of good faith and to work in partnership with the town board to adjust the request to reflect six-foot to the midway point in the side yard, down to a four-foot. So there's that partial six-foot side yard with four-foot beyond. But we'll, we'll verbally amend that, if we have to adjust that record wise.
That's fine. So the applicant has amended the, uh, the variance as stated to be a four-foot fence in the side yard up to the midpoint and then six-foot fence from there into the backyard. Any other discussion or questions by the board? Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? Please make sure if you're going to make a motion that you reference the amended application as stated. Mr. Latif?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this variance for, uh, Mr. DiCaprio. Uh, Mr. DiCaprio has shown the board that he's willing to reduce his, uh, application and, uh, by reducing it, he's going to the middle, uh, of the side of the house instead of to the front of the house. So, uh, this benefit, uh, cannot be achieved by any other means and, uh, this is a unique property. And the reason I call his property unique because of the property next to it, uh, that has all these side, uh, uh, yards and, uh, that we don't know what they're gonna do, if they're gonna do a fence or not. We did get a few letters, uh, positive for having the fence and as I said, Mr. DiCaprio is willing to move it to the middle, willing to put the four-feet fence where it's, uh, it should be. Is it gonna cause any, uh, undesirable change in the neighborhood? Uh, I don't think it's gonna cause any problems, I think they're gonna have more privacy in their backyard and, uh, people can't see through anymore. Is the request substantial? I have to say it is substantial to this board, we don't usually allow, uh, six-foot fences, but, uh, again, because, uh, Mr. DiCaprio has reduced it down and because of the unique property next door that justifies it. Will the request have any adverse, uh, physical or environment effects? I'm gonna say it doesn't have any. Is this alleged difficulty self-created? Again, uh, in some ways it is, but again, the property, uh, next door and the uniqueness of that property, and we don't know if the neighbors gonna put a fence or not. So for all these reasons, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna approve this application.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, as amended and discussed.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, uh, I'd also just like to add that, uh, due to the uniqueness of this property and the support of that, while we do normally hold this to be substantial, the uniqueness of this property, the support of the neighbors, including the new owner who could literally build this exact fence in the exact same proposed spot, as well as the, uh, amendments to the application that the applicant has taken to mitigate the need for variance, that's why on the balance, I would, uh, vote yes to approve for the other reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
No. I, I think, uh, even, even with a amended, uh, application, my concern is, uh, this may very well undesirably change the character of the neighborhood. While I'm appreciative, uh, of, of the dialogue that we've had, I just think it's going to change the neighborhood, so, uh, no.
Mr. Antonikowski?
I'm, I'm also, uh, no to the, uh, proposed or amended, uh, motion. I, I just see that, um, there, there are other opportunities, other options, uh, including vegetation that, uh, could be used to, um, achieve the same benefits and, uh, do not believe that allowing the midpoint, the six-foot, um, fence at the midpoint is justifiable.
Chairperson Freary?
I, I appreciate and applaud you for your flexibility on this. I think, uh, that's admirable, we don't often get that. People don't quite understand that one of our roles is to try and minimize the, the, uh, amount of a variance needed. I, I'm going to also vote no. My reason's very similar to Mr. Green and Mr. Antonucci. I understand that vegetation is not necessarily, um, the best option, but it is an option, uh, and sometimes a very effective option. I understand the idea of teenage boys' balls, but I think at this point, if your teenage boys look like the ones I see running around, those balls are going far over a six-foot fence. So I think the idea that you can deal with a four-foot fence in part of the yard, but switch to six-foot, um, I, I think is, if you really want privacy, there are some alternatives. Again, I applaud you for your flexibility. I think it's, I guess the only word I can come up with is ironic that the neighbor actually could put in a six-foot fence and to be quite honest with you, that might be a conversation that you wanna have with the neighbor. But as this proposal sits here today, I agree with Mr. Green.
There's not a six foot fence in your neighborhood. And this six foot fence stays in perpetuity with this property, even if you move tomorrow, next month, next year, 10 years, 20 years from now, it stays there. And the fact that there are not other fences in the area and this board usually takes a very critical view of six foot fences in front and side yards. It's it's as as some very elder Niskuna residents have said, uh, fence, six foot fences are not warm, fuzzy and friendly. They are obstructions and they serve a purpose for some people, but not in front and side yards. For that reason, I'm also waiting to vote no. However, your amended variance passes four to three. Good luck with your project and uh, again, my suggestion, visit that new neighbor. See if they're interested in a fence in their backyard.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
All right, thank you, good luck. Call them, call the next case, last but not least.
The appeal by Michael Bartone for a variance from section two twenty dash thirteen schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at thirty eight twenty two Albany Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R two medium density residential zoning district to construct a twenty eight foot by forty foot single family dwelling partially within the front yard setback and both side yard setbacks. Section two twenty dash thirteen schedule IC requires a thirty foot minimum front yard setback and a fifteen foot minimum side yard setback. As the as proposed, the house would be located twenty five feet from the front property line and ten feet from each side property line. Therefore, a five foot front yard setback variance and a five foot side yard setback variances are required. Nine notices were mailed out, one response and a county referral.
Um, the county referral has a modified conditionally approved. The Schenectady County Department of Environmental Health approval is required for a wastewater treatment system. I believe this home would need a septic. Um, and then other letters from Susan Savage, three eight one eight Albany Streets, Schenectady, New York, Town and Niskuna Zoning Board of Appeals. I would like to state my objection to allow a house to be built on three eight two two Albany Street outside of the zoning ordinance for the reason that I do not want this new house to be any closer to my home than it needs to be. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely Susan Savage.
I'm sorry, what was the address of that?
It's three eight one eight.
Thank you. And could you please, did we have the county referral or what was?
Yeah, the county referral is a modify conditionally approved. So essentially they approve it on the condition that if the home is built, it gets approval from the DOH for the septic system.
Okay. Thank you. Could you please give us your name, your address and a little bit about your request for variance?
Yes, it's uh, Michael Bertone and it's in regards to the address at thirty eight twenty two Albany Street. Um, the reason, the reason why I'm requesting these setbacks is it's a uh, a smaller lot, sixty foot wide by a hundred feet long, non-conforming building lot. And uh, I didn't think I had it go through the zoning department for the side setbacks under the E three sixty code that I was reading on a non-conforming building lot. It says that a house can be constructed no closer to five feet to a property line. Um, basically what I was getting at was an original house that I had drawn was forty foot wide by twenty three foot in depth, staying staying the thirty foot off the road. When my engineer designed it, I was looking at putting a split level ranch in raised ranch. And it candle levers out on a raised ranch. When I had him draw up the design and the floor plan I wanted, it wasn't candle levered out. Two bedroom, two bath, the second bedroom became eight and a half feet in depth by ten foot wide, the guest bedroom with a separate master bedroom. That's why I put in for a five foot front setback off the road. Instead of being thirty foot off the road, I'd like to be twenty five feet off the road, which now this whole concept may change. I'm still looking for the side setbacks and the front setback. I may have to reduce the depth of the building now, cause on Friday, I had a septic, I had a perk done on Friday. Dom DeCarlo from Schenectady County Health Department and Dan from engineering came over. About eleven inches under the soil, there was a little bit of modeling. So he, I got about about one foot of good soil. I have to bring in three to four feet probably of of perkable soil. That's the modified plan that she's talking about. Now, on the sides, that may have to be tapered and also at the back property line. Um, I'm like right at, that's the, do you have, do you have the plot plan? Okay, that being the, that being the proposed behind the house, that being the proposed um, waste area. Ten feet off the rear of the house would be the septic tank. Twenty feet off that would be the distribution box with three thirty foot leach lines coming out. That's what we were proposing. That may change now because of the slope, that it has to be sloped. Um, I may have to wind up cutting the house back a little bit. But at this point, I'm trying to just get it for what it is here. If I'm approved for a bigger house here, I could always shorten the back of the house. But I'd like to try and get the five foot variance for the front of the house because then the house is really gonna shrink and it's.
The variance that you're seeking here tonight?
Yes.
Five foot front yard, five foot side yard?
Sides.
Will accommodate your changes that you're saying you need to make?
It's gonna accommodate what I would like to do right now. When I have the new septic design back from the engineer, I may have to shorten the back of the house a little bit.
Okay, but that's not gonna change the setback issue.
That wouldn't change the set, that would give me more area for leach.
I I just, what I don't want to see is is you go through the trouble of getting these setbacks and all of a sudden it's not gonna accommodate your needs.
Yeah, um.
But it sounds.
If I were the, the the front setback, I could definitely use without a doubt. The side setbacks I could definitely use, because that gives me a forty foot wide house instead of something thirty foot. I have um, on the right side of that, I don't have any renderings with me, but it's a split level. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to put a two car garage on the right side of it. Ran raised ranch, couple steps up. You know, you get to the land and you go down a couple steps, you go up a couple steps. That plan may not even work, but I'm I'm trying to get this footprint because I got it because of the lot being so shallow in depth. I may, because it's perfect for like a walkout basement, the way the lot is right now. I'm gonna be filling all of that. So now if I did a walkout basement, now my grade is gonna change for my waistlines. So I'm gonna have to fill that lot straight across and that's gonna give me my three to four foot of soil that I'm gonna be required to have for a chambered system. Um, it's uh, there's a house left to me, on the left of me, that's seven and a half feet off the property line.
Is that, is that thirty eight eighteen?
That that may, I don't know how these 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 houses, the way they got them numbered and the lots numbered, like when I called you.
Do you have that picture?
It is thirty eight eighteen.
Here, take this, take this one back to the podium with you.
That would be thirty eight eighteen.
We gotta, yeah, we gotta have you, just take it back to the podium so we can get you on the record. So the house you were referring to that's close to the lot line, seven, seven and a half feet is thirty eight eighteen?
Correct. Correct. That's in regards to like the setback.
And on the other side is a road or is that a driveway?
That, that's a, that's a gravel road that goes down into the, down into the back. In the back, there used to be an old shack down there. I think it burnt or something and then somebody rebuilt it.
But is it an actual, is it a road?
It's a driveway, it's a platted road, that's why it's labeled as Gaskill Avenue. But it it isn't plowed or maintained by the town in any way, it's just a platted street probably.
What's that mean?
Um, if I were to bring up the subdivision plan.
No, that's all right, I I just, I've heard a paper street, but I don't know that I've. So it's it's literally a street, but it's it's what appears to be a driveway. It's non-maintained.
Correct, on the subdivision plan, it may have been a street at one time, which is probably why it's still labeled as Gaskill. I actually think that one of those parcels has a Gaskill Avenue address, but I, it's not um, it's not publicly owned or maintained in any way.
So in terms of impact on neighbors, let's say that the house that's on the other side of that, what I'll call driveway, there's, there's plenty of room in between those. Your your proposed lot and that house, it would be thirty eight eighteen, which is the closest neighbor to you, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thirty eighteen. Yep, that's thirty, yeah, thirty eight eighteen up there, I thought it said thirty eight forty eight, I could be wrong. No, it says thirty eight eighteen.
There any other variances that are recorded in this particular, I mean, the only reason I ask is thirty eight eighteen appears to be a, although I can't really tell, a fairly newer.
Thirty eight eighteen, I used to reside at thirty eight seventeen years ago, across the street right there, where my front porch was like ten feet off the road.
Thirty eight seventeen appears to be very close to to the, to the side yard.
Um, yeah, I think I checked it and I can double check it now. I don't think I had an area variance, I think it must have been built.
Do you have a plot plan? My surveyors, my surveyors got it, I had all four points marked, he's got it at uh, seven, se, what's that say, seven point one?
We do not have one, but if you only have one, I don't want to take your own one.
I submitted, copies were supposed to be made of this.
We have, we have it.
Mr. Chairman, I just think you're looking at a larger sheet.
Yeah, we have it. You want larger ones, I got larger ones, I got a bunch of them.
No, that's all right, I I, I have to just utilize my bifocals here.
Yeah, we don't have an area variance for thirty eight one eight, but I can tell you when the home was built too, I'll check on that.
Okay.
Actually, the people at thirty eight eighteen, the Passamontes that used to live across the street from me, Sam and Josephine Passamonte, that was a separate lot that Josephine had told me years ago that she had owned. And when the, when they passed away and eventually when Sam passed away, Josephine passed away, the daughters wound up with the property. And I bought the property off of Dave Cardella and he just moved out of state, he couldn't do nothing.
Have you had any conversations with the daughters at thirty eight eighteen about what you're?
Didn't know the daughter sold it to a guy named Ryan. I was talking to him the other day in uh, in his backyard, because there was a few trees in the backyard. He told me, oh, I'll take all that wood if you don't want it, because I was having the trees taken, three separate trees.
Okay.
Because he was gonna burn it.
But have you talked to him about what you're intending to do there?
Yeah, split, like he asked me what kind of house I was gonna do, split level or whatever. And I had mentioned the other day, I I had said to him, do you know that he's got hedges? And his hedges are actually over onto my property, property line, but I'm not busting his chops. They're maybe about four, six inches over, but they're like right tuck tight to his house. You can't really see him right there, but they're on that right side of the house.
Okay.
And that's a house with a garage, with a carport and then a shed. That's what thirty eight eighteen is.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Uh, basically, I'd just like to get in a decent sized home. I mean, forty by twenty, that's not even forty by thirty, I I mean, twelve hundreds, a little less than twelve hundred square feet. And I was trying to keep it from going two stories up, the design of it. I was trying to keep.
But at this point, you have your your designer, you've got a plan for it, at least.
I got a plan right now, but that.
No, I understand it could change, but I'm just saying. Okay, any other, any questions by the board?
Uh, I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the uh, letter that we received not in support of this application, where are they located?
At thirty eight eighteen Albany Street.
Yeah, that's thirty eight eighteen.
Which the numbers are supposed to get higher, I don't know why this lot is down here.
Okay.
They are supposed to be hired, we need to change the address of the home before you build it. But um, yeah. Yeah, I know, it's problematic, we noticed that prior to the zoning board meeting.
They went to this right here, they marked this whole road, I did call before you dig for my Tesla.
Yeah.
They marked all the road over here, I get over here, there's no markings.
That's why it actually needs to be changed. I didn't want to overly complicate the zoning board meeting, but for nine one one purposes, that address has to fall between the two homes. Um, so it'll have to get changed, but it was all noticed as that address. So we're gonna take action on it as that address and then we'll have to change the address and update our records.
Don't worry about it, we'll.
Um.
I couldn't figure it out.
The, the, the existing home directly adjacent to the property was built in nineteen forty five.
Twenty five?
Forty five.
Forty five, okay. So predates. Any other questions by the board?
At the sake of looking foolish, Richard Green. What, a fellow person asked where where the person was who sent the letter with the objection. And this is my shortcoming, I got lost. Could you please just help me, who's complaining or objecting?
So if you're looking at the vacant lot, it's directly to the left, three eight one eight.
Thank you, got it.
Lori? We're talking about this guy here that's complaining, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that was the letter of objection from that home.
And the re, is your property, how far is your property from his, looks like the side of his house?
He's, he's um, he's seven, seven and a half feet off the property line, you.
Off your property line?
Off my property line, yeah. His side is.
And he's complaining.
And he's complaining.
Any other?
I didn't think he'd have a complaint, he seemed pretty decent and he didn't complain to me about anything when I seen him the very beginning of the week or end of last week.
Any other questions by the board?
Uh, yes, I have a few questions for the applicant, uh, chairman. Uh, the plan that is up on the screen that we are all looking at shows the septic uh, footprint in the backyard. You said that would be a mounded system. Uh, can you describe the land in general, is there a slope across the property, front, back, side to side?
It's all leveled out by the time.
Yeah, you got it, wait, hang on, she's gonna give you the microphone if you're gonna wander.
Thanks. From around this area, all the way back is level ground. This is where I'm gonna have to have Phil brought in at, right near.
And it's the.
To level, to level the, to level the lot.
Okay, so the area where you're planning to put the house, is that also level but higher or is it sloping up to the road, down to the road?
Very, it's a very, very slight slope that goes like that, it's not a drastic slope or anything.
Down to the road or up to the road?
Down toward the back.
Okay, down toward the back, so if you're standing in the backyard.
This sits way down in the lower part down here, that's where that thirty eight twelve, that's considered, it's, I know it says gasoline or something, but they got a mailbox out front, there's a whole cluster, that's thirty eight twelve. They consider that thirty eight twelve down in that gully down there.
Right, so standing in the backyard, looking towards Albany Street?
Correct.
You would be looking uphill.
Correct.
Okay, uh, did you consider rotating the house so that it fit within the setbacks?
It doesn't work for me because I have to allow certain criteria. Septic tank has to be ten feet off the back of the house. Leach, distribution box twenty feet with the leach legs coming out of it. Ten foot leach leg off the rear property line, six foot away, another leach leg thirty foot long, another leach leg thirty foot long, all in an underground chambered system.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, one quick question.
Thank you.
Mr. Bertone, I know you said that just a couple minutes ago. On the side of your neighbor of, we talked about that property a couple times.
Thirty eight eighteen?
Thirty eight eighteen.
Correct.
You said their house far away from your property, seven point five. Your proposal. You said their house far away from your property, 7.5. Your proposal is going to be 10 feet away from their side, correct?
10 feet off the property line, correct.
Okay. So Laura, this, uh, this old house was built before the code, right? That's why they only have 7.5?
Correct. That's why they don't, yeah, that's why there's no variance on record.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is also a non-conforming building lot prior to 1972 also.
Right. Your building is non-conforming, but because you're building right now, we have to follow the 15-feet side and you're getting, you're asking for a variance for five feet.
Yes.
Five feet from the side and five feet from the front. So you're going to be 25 feet away from the...
Road.
From the road.
Correct.
And you're going to be five feet, uh, you're going to need five feet variance from the side.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
What, what I, what, this is what got me confused a little bit under the 220-1-5 lot regulations. Side yards in a non-conforming lot where it may be necessary to modify side yard regulations, under no circumstances shall a structure be constructed unless it shall have a minimum side yard of five feet. That's where I thought, you know, I was just asking for 10 feet. I just wanted relief of five feet.
Right. Laura, usually, uh, is it, doesn't it change for, uh, non-conforming, uh, the side? I know in the back it does change some.
It says the back and, the backs and the fronts. I can read that to you too. The back and the fronts, it says you have to get relief for, but it's, it's like more, uh, forgiveness, I guess, on the side setbacks.
Right.
Due to old zoning or, when they didn't have zoning laws.
All right. Thank you.
I just want to ask one more question. I know in the application, it says that the size of the building, the footprint is 23 feet by 40 feet.
No, 28 feet. That's the wrong sheet. That was amended. That was corrected.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions by the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but you know, it's, it's on my mind if I don't ask it, right? Okay, so say we grant you the variances you're asking for.
Okay.
And the side of the house that's closest to the neighbor that's closest to you?
Correct.
What, what are they going to be looking at? Are they going to, are they going to be looking at a vinyl wall? Are they going to be looking into a kitchen window? Are they going to be looking into a bedroom window? What's going to be there?
It's going to be, on the upper level, proposed, I mean, proposed, not like, like I said, this is all proposed based on my septic design. On the split level, it would be, on the top part in the rear section would be...
Just tell me what it is. It's going to be a bedroom, a kitchen? That's, that's all I'm asking.
The, the left side, lower unit.
Yeah.
Raised ranch.
I'm with you.
Garage on the right side. You walk through the garage. You have, in the back of the garage, you have a utility room. In the middle of the lower level, you have a washer dryer. On the other edge, on the other half of the lower level, you're going to have storage, a storage facility because it's not, wouldn't be considered a full basement. When you come up the stairs into the upper level split ranch, on the right side, you're going to have an open floor plan, kitchen, dining on the right rear corner of the house. On the left rear corner or in the, in like, I'd say the middle area right there, there's going to be, uh, that's going to be the second bathroom. That's going to be like for the guest room, guests. And in the, in the right or the left rear cor, or the front right corner is the master bedroom, going into a master bath, off the master bath, backing the other full bathroom will be a master bedroom closet.
All right, so let me, let's, thank you. Let me just see if I can narrow this down.
Okay.
For me. Okay, if you're standing on Albany Street and you're looking at the left, the left-hand side of the house, right?
Correct.
Okay, what, what's going to, what is your neighbor going to see?
Vinyl siding.
All right. Can you describe?
Same thing I'd see at, looking at his house, vinyl siding.
Yes. That, actually, you kind of read my, whoop, that's it, you read my mind. So...
I mean, vinyl siding, vinyl siding, except my siding is going to be newer than his siding.
I got a question for you.
Thank you very much.
You said, that he'll be looking at the vinyl siding of the house.
Correct.
And that's going to be all vinyl from point A to point B? Am I right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. There's not going to be any windows yet?
There's going to be, on the front master bedroom window, I'm not going to have, I may, it depends on how I design the bedroom because I have to have the walls for bed space and nightstands and stuff like that. So right now, the way it's designed, you have windows facing out of the master bedroom onto Albany Street. On the lower level, I could put in windows down on the bottom, which would be a storage area. They're definitely going to have two egress-sized windows looking out to Albany Street in the front, lower left half.
I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned about your neighbor here on this vinyl siding. The question is, is there going to be a window that he can look into?
No.
A lookout?
I'm not going to design a house where the neighbors are going to be looking in the window. They have one win-
So you're not going to have any windows there?
Possibly not. Not on the upper level, no.
Possibly, but it's a possibility it could.
Not the way I got the house designed. I would prefer to have the windows facing the road. I really don't want to be looking next door at my neighbor.
So there'd be no window there as far as you're concerned?
No. And he's got one window upstairs that looks down from like an office or something. He was telling me the other day.
And that window would be for what?
Which window?
The one up at the top.
He...
On the second floor.
He told me it was an office.
An office.
Correct. For his wife or a computer room or something. That's what he was telling me when I spoke to him the other day.
Any other questions by the board?
Uh, yes, I have a few more questions, but you might be able to stand there.
Go ahead.
Just give her back there.
He loves a lot though.
No, I thi, I think this is more a question about, uh, the nature of the buildings, that we understand how it would fit into the neighborhood, just understand, you know, the materiality of the building. If you could describe the...
Yeah, it's probably going to be more of an expensive, more of an expensive home compared to the neighborhood. They're all older homes in the neighborhood. This is going to be brand-new construction. Um, I don't have, um...
Well, you mentioned vinyl siding before. If you can talk about the, the roofing material perhaps, uh, the nature of the windows or, um, something of that nature so that we know it's not a, a stone mansion, let's say.
This is what I'd like to show in regards to a rendering.
Thank you.
Okay. That, this would be without the candle lever also.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Can you email that to the town so that we can properly enter it into the record? You don't have to do that exactly.
All right. This isn't, this isn't my exact plan, but this kind of like, shh.
Understand, but since you showed it to us and...
Okay.
It's being...
Yeah.
Recorded.
Not a problem.
Has a right to know what you showed us.
Okay. Similar rendering.
They just, that exact rendering that you're showing us?
Yes.
Please send that to, to the town so that they can enter that into the record.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Okay, and that, again, I would send that to Laura and make sure they get a copy of it.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Or you can submit your phone to the record.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Yep. And then, I don't know if I had this on here. Hold on one second. Now I'm going to show you similar, uh, floor plan here. Being that master bedroom I was talking about.
Okay, and that's showing that the windows are facing the street.
Street, correct.
So maybe we should have that submitted too.
Yes.
Now, now that you've showed, shown that to us as well, the public has a right to see what you showed us.
Not a problem.
Just send us that as well.
All right.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Bearing none, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? I'd remind the members of the board that we're dealing with two separate variances, a five-yard side yard and a five-yard front yard variance. So please make sure that you stay clearly in your motion if you're dealing with one, the other, or both.
Uh, I'd just like to ask as a clarification that the five-yard set, or five-foot setback on the side yards is on both sides of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, uh, I would move to approve both variances as requested, and I'll give my explanation here. Uh, I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by other means. The benefit described, uh, by the applicant is to create a home of a reasonable size, and the applicant has explored mitigating, uh, the variance. However, he's limited by the requirements of the septic build in this particular site. There's, uh, I, I don't believe that this is going to create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. In fact, I, I personally believe that, uh, infill as opposed to, uh, new development, knocking down trees to increase housing stock in the town is overall a very good thing. Um, I do find that this is absolutely a substantial request at five feet on each side. I don't see that there's any adverse environmental impact. And while this is self-created, that is not determinative. And on the balance, I would move to, uh, approve both variances as submitted.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes, and, uh, I applaud the applicant for all the work that he's done and presented to us, to the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Frere?
I'm going to vote yes. I think that, uh, given the position of this lot, the size of the lot, uh, I'm quite frankly amazed that you're getting in there what you're getting in there, but the fact that, uh, both the positioning of the house and the size of the house are going to be dictated by, uh, the septic system, I applaud you from, for being able to work with that and, and do what you've got to do. I, I am not concerned, to be honest with you, about the issue with the neighbor, given the fact that the neighbor's, uh, closer to the, the property line than you are, uh, even with the variance. Um, so for those reasons and the reasons that are stated, I'm going to vote yes. Your variance request is, both of them are granted and good luck with your project.
I appreciate it. I'd like to thank the board today for rolling in my favor. And I, I also tried, there is no other adjacent property or anything to make it conforming building lot, you know, so I did what I could do.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other matters of new business before the board? Not at this time. Can I ask for clarification?
The next meeting is the 24th, not what was done at the beginning of the year.
24th of August.
24th of August.
So we're actually, uh, a week beyond where we normally would be?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the fourth Wednesday instead of the third. Um, we are going to address the minutes from May at that meeting. You got a question? Oh, oh, waving. Okay, okay. Sorry. Um, and so we definitely have cases on for August. Oh, yeah. Okay, all right. No new business. Meeting is a week later, next, next, uh, in August. Uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
It's removed.
And voice vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, we're done.
Thank you. Can we put in motion to adjourn by claim?